I'd like to call to order the Palatine County Board of Supervisors workshop from May 1st, 2023. If Mr. Cox would help us with the pledge of allegiance, Mr. McClung, if you would do the indication, we'd be grateful.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you for this beautiful day in Palatine, and let us do the work of the people tonight and be with the people of Virginia Beach tonight with the tornado. Amen.
Are there any request postponed agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation? I'm hearing any can get a motion for formal approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any administrator updates?
Yeah, just a couple of quick updates this evening. One, you'll see construction starting this week on Route 60 to extend the Oak Bridge Turn Lane. That's the westbound left turn lane into the Oak Bridge Business Park. Tree clearing will start for that, I believe, Wednesday or Thursday. There may be some delays or partial lane closures, but that should be finished by the end of the month. And what that will do is essentially double the length of that turn lane, which we've been seeing backing up into Route 60. And then also you'll be seeing a notice for the Jude's Ferry project. This is something we applied for and secured funding a couple of years ago through VDOT Smart Scale Program. They're moving to the next step of right-of-way acquisition to move that project forward. So the next step is they have to post a notice to proceed, and if anybody sees that or have questions, they can contact county administration. But otherwise, they think they'll be able to move that project up and schedule quite a bit, a year and a half accelerated, they think. So we've had some tragic accidents at that location, a lot of concern. That's why we made it a priority, and so working with VDOT, looking to get that one going as soon as we can. And then lastly, Palatine County Fair is coming up. That's May 12th through 14th, so not this coming weekend, but the following.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, public comment period. Anyone wish to speak to the board from the public, please feel free to do so. You have three minutes if you're speaking as an individual and up to five minutes if you're speaking on behalf of the board.
Oh, hello. My name is Carl Schwandeman from 1727 Teresa Lane. Could they look into giving that turn lane treatment where they doubled the size of the turn lane? Could they do that to the turn lane at the intersection of Enamel Church Road and 522? Because I noticed the traffic on that little turn lane is backing up halfway under Route 60. Around between like at three o'clock in the evening, like at three o'clock in the afternoon, it'll be like the traffic will be twice as much that the turn lane can handle, that it's so bad to do a U-turn at the next intersection. So could they do that same low-cost treatment they did to the one at Oak Bridge to the one at 522?
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone online?
No, sir.
I haven't seen anyone else. We'll close the public comment period, go right into the old business.
So the first item in the old business is adopting the fiscal year 2024 operating and capital budgets. So this one, as we've worked through the various workshops and public meetings, most recently held the public hearing on it. And I don't believe staff has received any public comments since that public hearing on this. Total budget is $154,371,534. And then as part of this, we're recommending to just adopt the FY '24 CIP. As we had talked about in a recent workshop, we could revisit FY '25 and other future year CIP projects likely in October. After that time, we'll have updated financials, actuals from the prior year to give us a more accurate idea of what we'll have to work with on future CIP years. So I, as well as our finance staff, are here and available to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
I would like to make some amendments to the budget tonight. And I would like to make a motion that we do the following. And a quick question, this would be for Brett or our county attorney. If I want to make a motion to adjust the CIP, would I do this now or would I do this at the second resolution?
Well, the second resolution, I think, is the appropriating resolution, so it would be this one.
This one. Okay, thank you. Okay, so this will be twofold. It will be some changes in our budget as well as CIP. So for the budget, I would like to hold the schools and county staff at a 5% raise, not seven. Use the difference in the funding to fund the health insurance and equalize the health insurance at the schools. The remaining balance will come from the $369,000 that was slated to, for Richmond sewer capacity or basically their funding of their fixing their sewers. So that is one thing. I would like to eliminate the public utilities manager and replace that with the grant writer. I would like to take $5,000 off senior connections and put that towards community matters. That's the budget amendment. The CIP, I would like to propose to take $1 million off Carter-Gallier Boulevard, put that back in the CVTA funds, and basically use those funds to complete the projects that we voted on. I would like to take $50,000 off the floor refinishing for Company One. I believe they can probably use donations for their minor upkeep and expenses. Similarly, I would like to take 50,000 off the audio and visual improvements for the stave mill Company Two location. Again, I think they can probably fund those with local donations that they receive, as well as I know they charge for utilization of that area, and they can use some of that money to offset that cost. Lastly, I would like to take 200,000 off the emergency alerting system and potentially put that into the high schools for cameras. That is my proposal, or motion, I should say.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a question for the county attorney?
Did you get that?
Hold on one second.
I want to go through these individually. I can't do it.
I wanted to do it all at once.
I'm sorry.
I was sitting here writing them down as we were going, and I just want to make sure that I have each one of them. The motion by Ms. Carmack is 5% raise for county employees and Palatine County Public School employees. Use the offset of that, what we had prepared, I guess was a 7% to pay for the healthcare program for, to equalize that with the county staff and the school staff. And then use 369,000 for a, from the maintenance from Richmond, Virginia? Is that what?
Correct, yes.
On sewer. Eliminate the public utility director position. And add back in a grant writer position. Remove $5,000 from the senior connection funding.
Yep.
Remove the $1 million from the CIP that was to go to the Carter-Gallier extension.
Correct.
Pretty long motion. $5,000 off the floor refinishing at Company One.
Eliminate that. That's 50,000.
Oh, 50,000, I'm sorry. Eliminate that. And then also eliminate the 50,000 on the audio/video hookup system for Company Two. And the very last one, 200,000 from the emergency alerting system at Company Two. To what?
Cameras at the high school.
Cameras at the high school. I'm sorry.
Cameras at the high school.
High school. Okay. So there's, there's a motion on the floor, and I've heard Mr. Cox say that. Should we get a second on the motion before we go to his question for conversation?
It would be helpful to have a second, then I think I'm anticipating his question.
Okay.
At his, at any board member's request, a compound motion could be broken down into individual parts.
Okay, let's see if we get the second to the motion to begin with.
I will second that.
Okay, so Mr. McClung seconded it. Now, Mr. Cox has the opportunity to go ahead and ask your question that I think Mr. Latchney is assuming you're gonna ask.
Mr. Latchney has just anticipated. I would like to vote on each one of these individually so that I'm sure about what I'm voting for.
That's true. Okay. And as long as we all agree to that, are we okay with that?
Well, under Robert's rules, when you have a compound motion, any member can ask it to be broken down into individual component parts, so that's what Mr. Cox.
No problem. And it's now broken down into any part. We'll have to go at it individually. Yes, Mr. Williams?
This is interesting. Let me explain why. We've got millions of dollars, a million plus at least, dollars, and you have all these different motions to do things. But I don't have any figures here in front of me that says this is what the budget looks like. If I do each one of these things, what is the budget? I have nothing. I don't even have a scorecard to be able to calculate individual. If we break these one by one, what is the systemic effect on the budget, the bottom line? I have nothing. How am I supposed, my question is a rhetorical question. How can we do the people's business in this fashion? Nothing in front of us. All the workshops, it's been pushed to the side. Now I'm dealing with things like difference between a 5% and 2%, and then we're gonna fund or equalize the medical subsidy with the schools to the school. No figures, nothing. Once again, how do we do this? Has anybody got a score sheet that's gonna keep track of this and show me up here on the screen, show the audience what's the systemic effect of a line change of any one of these things, and where the money's gonna go? We don't have it, so I'm asking for help.
Mr. Chairman.
There's a good point. Yes, sir. Excuse me. Yes, ma'am.
I can count, counter some of that. A lot of it will be going back in the bank. For instance, the CIP, $1 million will be a savings to the county. It's going back in the CVTA funds. $50,000 for the floor refinishing is going back in the bank. The other $50,000 is going back in the bank. $200,000 that you're taking off the emergency alerting system is actually a savings because that was for 250,000 total for the emergency alerting system. So in essence, that'll be a savings. You're eliminating the, hang on, the public work, the utilities manager. He was at the tune of 150 or 180,000. Your grants writer was 50,000. The 5,000 off of senior connections going to community matters is a wash. It's still equalizing $10,000. The schools and the county staff, kind of the big one, to fund the health insurance, $998,000. Am I correct?
824.
For the health insurance?
998,824.
Okay, yeah, yeah. 998,824. The difference from the five to seven told roughly, give or take a little bit, 700,000. Your difference is gonna be coming from the 369 from the Richmond water and sewer that we don't, we don't even know if we need the money. So my point being is you're actually putting more money in the bank, so it's, it's not like we're spending, spending, spending. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, that's helpful, but if I may continue.
You may have the floor.
Well, thank you. The maintenance, you know, for sewer in Richmond, do we owe that?
If, if they do the repairs, we were obligated to do it, but we don't have any indication of when they will. We've reached out to them to try and find out. I assume they plan these things ahead of time. Is there a likelihood that it will happen in any given period? And I don't think they've given us much information about what their plans are, but we contractually would be obligated to pay our portion of it when they do it, but when that is, we don't know.
Well, you put it in the budget, and I'm assuming you put it in a budget because public utilities, Johnny Melis and his staff said this is something we need to be planning for. Okay, and if we don't have the money to fail the plan, it's a plan to fail. Where is the money gonna come from?
Yeah, when, when Richmond does their improvements or upgrades, then we'd have to find it somewhere, sure.
I mean, we say it goes into the bank, and I'm assuming this would go in the bank. Is the bank gonna be held there in perpetuity until the money is needed, then we take it out of the bank?
Mr. Chair.
Is that a question you're asking, Ms. Carmack?
I will yield to anybody that has an answer.
Okay.
I would be happy to answer. If that gives you angst, that's not a problem. We have 1.1 million set aside for a comp and class plan. How much is that gonna cost us? We have not a clue. We have 1.1 million set aside for a comp and class plan that we have no idea if it's gonna be 600,000, 6 million, or 60,000. The one thing we do know for sure is that it's 998,000 to equalize the health insurance. The schools have said repeatedly, the health insurance is an issue. It's difficult recruiting and retaining teachers because of this difference. My point, if that, the 369 off of the Richmond utilities gives you angst, pull it off the 1.1 for comp and class. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I may follow up.
Certainly, Mr. Williams.
I know why the 1.5 is in the budget.
1.1.
Sorry.
It was 1.1. It was reduced.
Okay, I'm juggling a lot of figures here tonight. So we know that's set aside, and we know the purpose. If we take the maintenance for the sewer system that we are obligated contractionally to pay when the bill comes, where does that go? Is it gonna go over to, right now, in the budget, we don't know what it's gonna cost, you know, for the 1.1, might be less, might be more. But we have a place in the budget for it. My question is, where does the 369,000 go? Where is the place for that?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I will yield to anybody that can answer the question. I'm just trying to get information.
I'm not following when you say where is it going.
The question either myself.
We have a place in the budget that's designated for the 1.1.
The utility deal with the water agreement with Chesterfield.
We have a place. If we just take it out of the budget, my question is, where does it go?
Yeah, she answered that, I think.
Where does it go?
You want to answer? I mean, you didn't answer that. I think you're gonna take the 379.
Yeah.
And you're gonna apply it to the healthcare equalization.
The 369 is going to the healthcare.
Yes, yes. Because that, we don't.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna push back on this thing about the equalization of the health insurance. And I said this when we had the joint meeting. This is not a new issue. And we go back to looking at how the elected school board plans, manages, and spends with the money that we provide to provide a quality education. They make decisions with where that money is gonna go. Now, instead of equalizing the subsidy for the health insurance, they've chosen to do other things in their budget. One of the things is the early retirement program for teachers. And again, the mantra is, well, they're closing up, but yet we've got 40-some people that are in line, not unlike when we had with the supplemental retirement program. There was always somebody else that was in line that was gonna take retirement, that we had to leave the door open. I asked the question at the joint meeting, what is that gonna cost? Couldn't get an answer that night. I still don't have an answer. So when we chose to make the health benefits whole last year for 19% increase, we did that. We stepped up. My understanding is, schools didn't do that. Once again, that is a decision an elected school board makes with the money we send them. So if we're looking at every time they say we need something to be able to do X, Y, and Z, and you've seen the money go for other things, then going and simply layering on another amount of money on top of the existing bureaucracy doesn't work for me. Because you have to plan, manage, and spend within your budget. You can't just come back and say, well, we used up all that money. Give us more money so that we can do this. So I'm not gonna be in support of that, so when we get to voting on these things, I'll express my dissatisfaction with a no vote on that. Now, if you go back to the utility director versus a grant writer.
Excuse me, Mr. Williams. If you don't mind, being we're gonna take these one at a time, how about we go through them one at a time now, as opposed to going through a 20 minutes of conversation, but let's do each one of them now, and then you express your dissatisfaction or satisfaction with them as we get to each one of them. I think Mr. Cox's suggestion was a good suggestion that we go through each one of them individually.
That's fine. I'm bound with that.
Good. Let's go to the first one that I think Ms. Carmack brought up, which was the raises 5% for the county employees, 5% for the school employees, and use the offset there to make up the cost of the healthcare coverage for the school employees. In that, the number I think she said was 369. When I look at my notes, I think the number was actually 379,000 for that. But to use that funding from the agreement out of the CIP to offset the total difference, which equalizes it, that would be what we're talking about now.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Let's go. So the offset is 2%. We don't, we, the schools are funding at 5% currently. Okay, and so we've got $450,000 we could give them. Okay, so that's, I'm trying to add this up, okay? So that's $450,000. So where's the rest of it coming from?
The difference in the county from 7 to 5%.
Okay, which is 380.
Exactly, roughly 380.
341.
Okay, so those are... So you want to take their money. We don't know that we're going to actually have to do a 7% raise.
Correct, exactly.
So this is funny money. Okay, this is money we might not have to spend.
Correct.
Okay, but you want to spend it anyway.
I want to equalize the health insurance.
No, let me finish. Please. I want to understand this. So this is money, the potential is there for a 7% raise, we don't know. But we've built in contingent for that. So you want to take that money, which we may not have to spend.
Correct.
Okay, and spend it.
Correct.
You want to make it a guarantee we're gonna spend that.
Correct.
And how many times have we discussed this?
We've been discussing it for several years now.
No, how many times have we discussed this during this budget cycle?
Once, I think, at the joint meeting.
At joint meeting, you said, a couple of supervisors said, yeah, I like this, okay, but nothing about how that would impact our budget.
Well, we're discussing it now.
Ms. Carmack, I understand that. Thank you. And what is the downside if we don't?
You're kicking the can down the road. I mean...
Or asking the schools maybe to solve their own problem? Which they, which is Mr. Williams', they have avoided time and time again. The 19% increase last year, they, they gave half of it to the teachers, half of the cost. They didn't even discuss it. So do we ever stop bailing out the schools for bad decisions?
They have mentioned to me, several school board members, that it is a problem, this health insurance. The teachers are leaving because of the health insurance. They...
Actually, they're leaving for a lot of reasons. One of them is this packet of information I just got from Dr. Tiggen. Okay, that deals with why the administrators are not able to control the classes and why the teachers are being pulled in multiple directions. It's not just that. That's an important item, but the schools have created it. They have managed for that problem. And so we want to take taxpayer dollars and guarantee that we're going to spend that money.
We're doing that with a lot of things tonight, guaranteeing that we're gonna spend the money. This isn't like it's an anomaly. That's what the budget's about, what we are going to spend the money on. Yes, you are correct.
This is money that today, coming in tonight, it was a contingent fund, if you will.
For the schools, it was. For the county, it was not. For the county, it was built at 7%.
Oh, ma'am.
The schools, yes, it was. This county, Mr. Shardine, was the county not built at, budgeted at 7%? The schools was budgeted at 5% with a potential. We added the $450,000 in for the difference. I may be wrong.
Both were, so we'd build in a 5% for both, and then for both, a plus two if the state does it.
Okay.
So it would be, it was contingent upon the state doing. If the state didn't do it, then we weren't going to do it, and we would be coming back to you to figure out whether we do with those funds.
Okay, so regardless, what I'm proposing is we keep it at 5, regardless of what the state does. If the state comes back at 7, we're still keeping it at 5.
Understood that.
Yeah.
My point was, it was that that amount of money was a contingent amount of money.
Right.
You're making, you said, well, no, I want to spend it tonight for something else.
Okay. Anything else?
No, okay. I finally got the number.
Your point's good there. I got it. I just won't understand. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
But I'd like, yeah, actually, I'd like to ask our county administrator, what do you think?
Yes, it's just like schools. We struggle with, with retention and staff and keeping good people, getting people. We're having a very difficult time filling positions. Part of that is pay. So I have real concerns about dropping that 2%. Again, we had made it clear to our staff that this is, we're only doing it if the state does it. Just last week, Goochland approved their budget. They're doing 7% regardless of what the state does. And they're doing 13% for emergency management communications. They're doing 10% for sheriff and fire and EMS. Positions, we've seen that we can't compete with Goochland on. We've been finding we're 23 to 30% behind them. So if they're going 7%, then we're, we're just even more, more behind, so we're gonna continue to find it hard to keep and find good people. So I worry about that. You know, it's only 2% in the scheme of things. It's, it's not a lot, but the message it sends and us losing more ground to who we're competing against. It's a hard market. Now, schools hadn't asked for the 2%. We did that because we felt like if the state does it, we need to be equal with both. I certainly would have no issue if we want to use the schools' 2%. I certainly would have no issue if we want to use the schools' two percent towards that. I think that would be proper, and I think they would probably be okay with that. You know, I would love to see us equal with them on insurance. I wish they had built it into their budget, but I know the superintendent was new, and this is our first budget cycle. And regardless of what you do tonight, next time, I think we'll be a lot better and different, certainly. But us keeping our rates where they are didn't magically happen. We made, our staff made psychophisis, made hard decisions, and we chose to do that, which meant we didn't fund other things. Schools made different decisions. Not saying they're right or wrong or different, but when we chose to hold the line on our insurance, they did not. They funded other things, which may have been better things. I don't know. But again, we didn't, we didn't get here by accident. It's because we purposely worked to get ourselves to that place. So I hate to then see administration have to pay for the school's benefit when, to get us from seventy-seven to sixty-nine cents. We've absorbed seven cents on the administration side. Schools absorbed one. So I just have real concerns with that and what it will do for morale and our competitiveness in this market. It's already difficult. So if schools want to take their two percent and get them halfway to that, great, but I would have real concern about dropping the two percent on the county side. And again, if the state does, we've been clear that we're not doing it. If the state doesn't, then they can be the bad guy in it. But I would like to at least give it the chance. Work to, if you all want to fund all of the schools, I don't have a proposal for you tonight, but we could certainly look at working with them to find other ways to do it. Again, my preference would to be not use the administration's two percent side.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
The one thing, I completely understand where you're coming from with the morale and the five to seven percent. Where I kind of went with that a little bit was to staff, that will get made up hopefully with this comp and class study, which technically that should be, those results should be coming out fairly, you know, maybe in the next month or two. So some of these guys, girls, may be getting, we're not going to be looking at five percent, they're going to be getting fifteen percent raises. I mean, it kind of goes back to, you know, last year when Mr. Smithers gave these, you know, exorbitant raises. That was to thirty-three employees. So I don't, what I don't think, I don't want staff to get bogged down in the, oh, my God, it's five percent versus seven percent. The reality is, you may be getting a very sizable raise if you're, you know, being that we have the one point one put away for it that hopefully, you know, will cover the lion's share of it. The other thing I did consider was, speaking of raises, if you, you know, people were concerned about the raise, you do the teachers at five percent, and you do the county staff. If you make less than a hundred thousand, you get seven percent. If you make more than a hundred thousand, you get five percent. I mean, it's just another way to look at it where, you know, basically your lower wage earners are making more money or getting a more sizable raise. But I do think that the important takeaway in this is, we are, we understand that we're behind in salaries and we're, we're addressing that. It will be addressed, period. You know, so the, come July, whether you're making a five percent raise or a seven percent raise, it won't matter because they're going to be getting a raise totally different of that anyway. That's what I would like to propose.
Yeah, and just the, I'm glad we're committing to the class and comp and going to address some of that, and that'll be big for how we're able to be more competitive and retain people. But just one piece to that is that two percent. Originally, we're one point five million set aside for class and comp. We took the two percent out, saying essentially we're addressing some of that through the two percent. So gaining some early ground on the class and comp work. So if, if we eliminate the two percent there, then it's also been eliminated in class and comp. So we're, we don't know what it'll cost, but we had put that one point five in there. So again, I feel that we're maybe defunding that to the level where we won't be able to do it. We won't know until we see it, but it would be lower than what we really started with in this budget because that two percent came from that.
And as Mr. Williams said, we probably won't be able to correct it all in one year, but we can certainly, with the one point one, tackle the most egregious of the differences. I'm pretty sure that, you know, can certainly happen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Well, let's go back to the school's budget. So now we're talking about increasing the school's budget, almost two and a half million dollars. Is that right? We had, we had, they asked for two million. You cut it back to a million and five, then you added four hundred and fifty thousand back, which is part of this, okay? And then three hundred and some eighty-odd thousand. So we're talking about raising the school's budget two point three million. This looks to be about right. So that's built, that's built into all of this going forward. We increased the school's budget two million dollars last year. When they asked us for two million at the joint meeting, I told them that was not sustainable, and here we are building, building in cost again. At the same time, we have depleted on both sides of the balance sheet, both the operating budget and our CIP, the revenue stream that's coming in because we reduced the tax rate to sixty-nine cents. So that reduces revenues on both sides. I guess my problem with what you're doing, suggesting tonight, is doing it on the fly. Okay, and not really understanding, I'm not, I don't know about you. I don't understand how this ripples through and what it's going to do when I turn Mr. Boles on it with his, with his model. If we want to get into all of this tonight, I just assume we defer, we don't have to vote on the budget tonight. We don't have to. I'd like to better understand all of the things you're doing because I've got some things I'd like to talk about, okay? And Mr. McClung, do you have anything?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so I mean...
But I think we do need to do a budget tonight. At least come to a conjugal agreement.
Would you explain to me what you'd like to do tonight?
Well, I think, Ms. Carmack, in terms of, I agree with the changes.
Yeah.
Well, I think the changes with the healthcare plan is, it's the time to do it. And I think getting a healthcare, if you go from seven to five percent, getting your healthcare is probably a pretty good raise, more than seven percent. I would rather have healthcare, I know it didn't affect everybody, but for our teachers, they've been looking for this for a long time. And I have met with all the school members and Ms. Tiggen, and they, they really want this.
Of course, they want free money. They want free money, understand.
I'm talking about healthcare. I'm talking about healthcare for the teachers. They are losing them every day to surrounding counties. A lot of teachers have left to surrounding counties because of the healthcare. I think their salary's like thirty-three percent of goes towards their healthcare.
Understand that. So do you understand the implication, the financial implications of this? That's what I'm talking about, okay? It's not just free money that's sitting on a table and you can shuttle it around. Now it goes into the budget, okay, for eternity and compounds.
Mr. Chair. I feel like, back and forth, back and forth. Then I'll, then I'll be quiet. My last point, I promise.
We're going to take a vote here real quick. I can tell you that.
Last point, then I'll...
I'd like to get a question here.
It's no question. I was going to say, the one thing with the modeling that people need to understand is that is, the modeling holds the tax rate at sixty-nine cents. We have not held a tax rate in this county for years and years. The assumptions on that model are very, very, very conservative in the sense that new construction is forty-five million. We haven't had new construction of forty-five million in years. So that's my whole point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman. Hold on, Mr. Cox. Let's let Mr. Williams have a little conversation piece here.
God bless you.
Because we're, yeah, we're forty minutes into the very first topic, and there's multiple things here, so.
I don't see a light at the end of the tunnel either.
Might not be one, but we're going to vote.
When we get, when we finish discussion, we'll get there. My first question, and I guess this is for the county attorney or whoever, once again. After we go through each one of these and we have our vote on each one of the items on Mrs. Carmack's adjustments to the budget, are we going to have a vote for the budget with amended changes? That's my first question. We can get that out of the way right now. I just need to know.
I can't tell you if we're going to have a vote on that because there's no motion on that right now. But there's a, there's a scheduled vote for this motion that's here. Ms. Carmack has amended.
We said we were going to break out each one of those if we could. So my question is, now that we're breaking out each one of these, and we'll go through and have a vote on each one of those, are we then going to have a vote on the budget that reflects the changes that were voted on? That's my question.
If somebody makes a motion, I guess we will.
Well, do we need to do that to make a budget?
Well, that, your question's to Mr. Latchey, that is where you're going.
Anybody that can answer.
That's going to happen. It has to happen, whether it happens tonight or happens at a deferred meeting. It has to happen. So that, that, once these individual amendments are voted on, there has to be at some point a vote on the amended or not amended.
That's why, that's why I wanted, just make sure.
Yes, got it.
Okay, on this particular one, I want to see from staff, I don't want to sit up here and try to calculate as the discussion has just gone back and forth with Mrs. Carmack, what the numbers are. I want to see the numbers of what I'm voting on in advance of the vote. So whoever wants to give that, Charlotte, you can give it to me. Tommy, you can give it to me. But I want to see it in writing what it is I'm voting on, what the figure is.
Is that your comments?
That's my request.
Okay. The request that Mr. Williams makes, he has the right to request that, I'm sure, without any doubt. The vote that we're going to take, we can take the vote. We have a second. We've had conversation. We can have a vote, right?
Yes.
Okay, on the motion, right? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
And if my memory is right, I think I can call for that vote at whatever time after we've had a sufficient amount of conversation and back and forth on this.
No, it would take four votes to end debate.
Okay.
So you'd have to have four votes to end debate on the subject.
Okay, good. Go ahead, Mr. Cox.
How will I know the number that I'm voting on, the budget, with all of these individual pieces dangling? So, Mr. Lachney, you, what I heard is that we can vote on a budget as amended with no real numbers. Is that correct?
Well, let's, yeah, the one that we're talking about right now, the concept, if you vote on that concept, staff will make those numbers work, but you will have adopted those numbers without seeing them. Yes. Yes.
Wow.
So those numbers that we haven't seen supposedly, if my memory is right, to, I think, the nine workshops that I've been to, because I don't think I missed any of them, the two percent from the schools is, that's out there, has been quoted multiple times as four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that correct? Mr. Voe, and why don't you guys come right on up here? We'll just make sure we get this clear now. The, the two percent from the county side would be equivalent to three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Is that right? The maintenance apart, maintenance part that Ms. Carmack is talking about, is it, do you guys know if it's three sixty-nine or three seventy-nine?
It's three seventy-nine.
That's what I thought. So that's three seventy-nine. The five percent versus the seven percent, we now know that that is, according to you, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. And then the other is three hundred and seventy-nine thousand. That's one million, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The school number that we've all been given that tells us how much it is to equalize this healthcare is nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four, or else eight hundred and forty-two. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're going to have a little bit of excess money if we vote on this. Am I right?
Yes, approximately seventy-two thousand dollars.
So there will be seventy-two thousand dollars left over from that motion if carried forward tonight. Seventy-two thousand, right?
Approximately, yes.
Yep, okay.
Mr. Chairman, when you're finished, I have a question.
Oh, we'll go right ahead, Mr. Cox.
Where does the three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars live in our budget?
In the utilities fund.
I'm sorry?
Utilities fund.
So it's, it's a utilities fund, and it is one-time money or is it reoccurring money?
It would, it would be paid for by transfer from the general fund. So it would be recurring dollars. That number does change every year based on a contractual schedule that Mr. Melis has. So next year, it's a different number based on what they're going to do.
It's not coming from, okay, it's coming from reoccurring funds.
Yes, sir.
Reoccurring funds. That, that's important. Now, the question was asked, what happens if we have to pay it? The answer is, we have the money to pay it, but it will reduce the amount of money going into our CIP. Okay, just like as we reduced from seventy-seven to sixty-nine, we were already taking a thirty-three million dollar haircut to the CIP. That means we're going to defer even more things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Do we need to do a roll call vote here, Mr. Latchey, on this? No, we don't?
I would like a roll call vote.
Any member can ask a roll call.
Yeah, he can request that, absolutely.
I think I just, I just for clarity.
No problem, absolutely.
And this is voting on what?
You're voting on the raise to be five percent, to use the difference of the seven to five percent and the three hundred and seventy-nine thousand from the utility fund to pay for the healthcare for the Palatine County Public Schools to equalize that to the same rate that you have at Palatine County employees. So that school employees will pay the same percentage amount as the Palatine County employees pay. Brett?
If I could, just one final thought or comment. This, this, you'd be voting to only do the five percent. You had mentioned, regardless of what the state does, I would just ask to give me the opportunity to, if the state does do it, look at how maybe we could do that school budget as well. We don't know what the state's going to do with that. There could be additional money from them that ends up being enough to pay for all their insurance on, on their own. So again, it's always been contingent upon what the state does. I would just hope that we cannot fully kill that tonight, but just kind of defer decision on that. Let me work and see what we can do to potentially make the two percent realize, if the state does it. But again...
If the state doesn't.
Yeah, if the state does it, if the state doesn't do it, then we've never proposed it.
We're out of a dead manner. If the state does it, then we're just going to open up to a later conversation of how we're going to make up that money.
Correct. It's not, not in your motion, but I just, just want to know that there's a commitment to...
Compliance on that.
Correct.
Okay, so let's start a roll call.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Carmack?
Yes.
Mr. Byerly?
Yes. That motion passes four to one. So now, the next thing is, the next motion on this topic would be the elimination of the public utilities director from the budget. Is that what you have on there?
And replacing, putting the grants writer back in.
Okay, so, so let's just do one, as Mr. Cox said, I like your suggestion a lot, Mr. Cox. Let's keep it simple and go through each one of them one at a time. Okay, so let's just decide if we're going to eliminate the public utility director. Okay, that's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is now opening on the floor to eliminate the public utilities director.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mrs. Carmack, I'd like to understand why. I'm sure you have reasons.
I think the deputy county administrator... I think the deputy county administrator is very capable of overseeing the, the, the whole point of the project of the public utilities director is kind of to oversee the the progress of projects, et cetera. It's not the nitty gritty of the actual logistical engineering. And I think the deputy that we have can suffice, kind of like he's overseeing the roofing, obviously with the input of, you know, Mr. Melis and, um, Mr. Piper, but I think, I don't think we need kind of the duplicity of a deputy county administrator and a public utilities manager. If anything, I think we could use somebody under maybe more of an assistant, but not a manager.
Mr. Sharnine, this was your request. You have a different view than?
And, and we originally had looked at, I think we originally proposed it as a, a engineer position that would have been under Mr. Melis. Maybe we're skipping ahead a little bit with the grant rider. I would be more comfortable with eliminating director of public works and instead of a grant rider doing that engineer position, I think that would be more valuable to the organization.
Say that again.
Sorry, so I, I think if I understood, this was kind of a two-part or two in a row where eliminate the director of public works, but add back in the grant rider. I'm saying I, I've, we're gonna do this. I would be okay with eliminating director of public works, but I would value adding the gra, uh, sorry, adding the engineer and not doing the grant rider.
What, give me a little, the, the engineer would be more, um, helping, they wouldn't be the director, correct?
No, it would be, instead of being a director position over, uh, Mr. Melis, it would be, uh, under him, so like a junior engineer to help with, with, that's, that's where we see most of the need there.
Okay.
Um, where the prior director had their PE certification, did some of that work. Um, I think some of the things we do actually through that department require a PE, so we have to pay a consultant to be the PE if we don't have it in-house. So i- if it would be okay with the board, I would say, don't have the grant rider, grab that and add, add that engineer position in lieu of that.
What would that salary be? Could you do both? Could we do that engineered position and the grant rider?
With, with benefits, I doubt it.
Okay.
Mr. Voe, why don't you and, uh, Ms. Schubert join us again?
Just a thought, if you could get.
To, I have it here. Uh, to give you an idea of the total cost for each position, the, um, public works director position would have a total cost of $158,544. The rent rider, $83,244, and the engineer position, $107,964. To do both, um, you would need an additional, let's see, 20, 27,000 or so, um, to do both and get rid of the public works director position.
Back to Mr. Sharnine.
Okay, certainly, go ahead.
So what, what was? When I talked to the utilities department, they told me they're drowning. What'd they say? They're drowned. So what help are they not getting?
From the engineering side. So I think that's the need is, is an engineer.
Okay, so. What does, you, you, Mrs. Carmack mentioned the deputy county administrator who has no comp, no demonstrated competencies in this area at all. That's not where he's at. So what is, what is, what, what is missing? Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure. If you, you obviously wanted a deputy, okay? Not a deputy, you wanted a, a public utility director for a reason, rather than, uh, just an engineer. So that person was going to bring more to the table, uh, that was needed.
Yes, somewhat also on the facility side. I, I think the more, uh, more significant need is on the engineering side, but there's a need on the facility side as well. Um, although I think there, especially if we have an engineer to take, take some of that load off, then, uh, the deputy county administrator could do more on the facility side. That, that is something. I, I wouldn't be able to do the engineering portion either. Uh, you know, that's something, there's specific training, specific background certification that goes into that, where uh, more of the facility side procurement, project development, things of that nature, um, could be expanded upon, I think, if we have assistants on the engineering side from, say, a junior engineer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I'm back where we left off. The history of this is the former county administrator. When the utilities director Ramona Carter, y'all remember her? She was an engineer. She left the county, she left, former county administrator. He decided to take that position and turned into a deputy county administrator. And there's a whole storied history attached to that story, uh, whether or not that was even legal. But what that did was Ramona, at that time, Ms. Carter, was handling 50% of the projects in that department along with Mr. Melis. When that position suddenly became a deputy county administrator, that help, that work person left. So now you've got 100% of the work now is not being done by two people, it's being done by one. And that's Mr. Melis today. Now, Mr. Cox is right. The ideology of this request is they're underwater. They need help. They need somebody like who? The person that left, and that was Ms. Carter. She was an engineer. Now, the county administrator is correct. We are contracting out today because we don't have an engineer under the county's tent to sign off on any projects that needs DEQ, the Corps of Engineers. We've had to create a pool of engineering companies with pricing for different things where we have to pay for that. So in one fell swoop, we took Mrs. Carter's position, an engineer, turned it into a deputy, left Mr. Melis with 100% of the work, which was being done by the two positions, and then we said, yep, we don't have an engineer in this county to sign off, so we're gonna pay somebody else to do that. Now, this is a lesson in organizational management, how not to do it. So tonight, even with the recommendation of the county administrator, we're set to swap out this position that's been recommended for the grants writer. Doesn't make any sense to me. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chair.
Ho- hold on a second. I got a question here. I love you guys going back at it. Question, hold on. Mr. Williams brings up some good points. Um, Ms. Carter, uh, signed off on DEQ documents in the past. Did she sign off on them? And are you saying yes? Are you saying, I don't know, or maybe?
I believe so.
Okay. She, she's, she was a PE, she's a professional engineer. She had that status. And I believe, I don't believe, I know Mr. Melis said at the workshop we were at, he's, um, taking that test in October to become a PE. Of course, he's gotta pass the test, which I would guess Mr. Melis will. He's a very sharp guy. The engineering firms that we're contracting out with, there's three of them or four of them?
F4, one, I believe is more, uh, uh, structural in nature, not.
How much do we pay them?
It depends on the, on a particular task. The typically what we would do is send them a description of what work we need done, and then they would send us back a quote.
Right. So they give us an idea as to what the, what the cost is gonna be?
Yeah.
And it's three of them that compete for that?
Correct.
Before we had them, who, who drew up the, the project that we had?
Uh, it would be, I would say, public works did more of it. The, the director would have done more of that. We did, did still use, uh, consultants and engineers if something was beyond our capability or, or time.
Right. Yes, Ms. Carmack.
To Mr. Williams' point, it's my understanding that you're not allowed to sign off on your own work. So Ms. Carter, albeit she was a PE, we still needed an outside source. This is what I was told, to sign off on any work that was done. So we've always, because when we contracted with these engineering firms, it wasn't because Ramona Carter left. We, in fact, she was here and did the proposal. We contracted with them, so we had a relationship with various engineering firms, and we had a little more, um, cachet, I guess, when we went and asked them for a quote. That was the reason. Furthermore, um, you know, Mr. Melis, I mean, yes, great, hardworking guy, but he also did receive a sizable raise and a title change to take on additional responsibility. So I should, actually, I'm not sure about the title change, but I am sure about the raise. So it's, it's not like, you know, we, he, you know, was totally thrown to the wolves. Um, and I, I would have no problem looking at the assistant like you had suggested.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Relax, I'm not gonna get into a back and forth. That's not gonna happen. Fact remains, whatever sign off, not sign off, that was occurring, real issue is the workload. Johnny's carrying the load right now that was divided somewhat equally between himself and Mrs. Carter, Ms. Carter. So, as Mr. Cox said, again, he needs help. And that's evidenced by the fact that the county administrator brought that forward to us. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I'm sorry, we didn't know about this in advance, so we could have invited Mr. Melis to tell us, uh, what's going on in his world. So what you're asking me to vote on is incomplete information. We don't know, would, Mr., I've talked with Mr. Melis, he's, he's, he's struggling, he'll tell you that. And the answer to that was the answer that our county administrator gave us. And you want to change that, then I don't, I don't have the information that I need in order to do them, as Carmack, that's, that's, that's my problem. And, you know, it's a pretty important area, really is. And so, once again, we're, we're doing this on the fly when we don't have to, when we have the op, option of getting more information or had the option of actually having the information here tonight, we should have known to invite Mr. Melis. So that's where I'm at. I don't have enough information to make a decent, informed decision uh, on what's the best way to cook this up. I care less about the grant rider. That to me is is, is not important at all. What, what is important is our utilities department making sure that functions and functions well. So that's, that's where I'm at. I, I don't have enough information to make a decent decision. Anyone else?
I got one comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. McClung.
I think last Friday, three of the supervisors spent the whole day with Department of Public Works, which included Mr. Melis. We were invited to a ribbon cutting, and we went back to the Department of Public Works for several hours for a nice dinner, and, uh, we spoke with each one of the people that we are talking about in there, Johnny as well, well capable of running his, uh, department. And if Mr. Sharnine would like an engineer underneath him, I would support that. I would support the county administrator.
All right. Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I intended to make this a, a public announcement, but there's been conversation to the same effect of what Mr. McClung just referenced today, three supervisors being at the ribbon cutting.
Didn't say what, three.
Okay, but it's, the inference was out there on Facebook. Let me explain to you where I was at. At 8:30, I was at Dr. Thorne's office. She's a hematologist.
Didn't say which three.
I don't care what you said, you implied it, and let, don't interrupt me and let me finish.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Then at 1:30, I was over at the Barnes and Coors over at the Watkins Center, getting an ultrasound on both legs. So I don't usually miss meetings, events. You can check my record, whether it's at the TPO, any org, any group that I belong to, I attend. When I can't, there's always a reason. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. All right. So the motion that's on the floor is to eliminate the public utility director. That's the motion that's on the floor.
Can I amend that?
Sure.
No, the motion belongs to the body now.
Oh, okay.
So it would have to be a second amendment to supplement.
It would actually take a level of amendment, a new amendment with another motion, a debate on the amendment.
Right, right.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Before we get lost in amendment, 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 I'd like to know what she really wants to do, okay?
I was just gonna say, replace it with the assistant. That's, replace with the assistant. Place the, but, all right.
I'm just gonna tell you now, make a, make another motion. Go through this one. Would, would you agree with that, Mr. Latchey? Let's do this motion, and then you can have another motion.
Make a motion to, she can make a motion to amend her previous motion, but it's gonna take a second and further debate.
Well, even if, 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 excuse me, even if she does that, then, and she has to make, not that, but if she makes us, another motion to hire an assistant under Mr. Melis, you're gonna still have that open up. You're gonna have to have a second on that and a debate on that.
That would be the cleanest, is just vote on elimination, and then if she wants to make another motion, that's the cleanest way.
Yeah, I'm agree, I'm agree with that. You want to do a roll call, Mr. Cox, please? Mr. Sharnine, so let me repeat this motion one more time, so we're all clear. The motion on the floor of Ms. Carmack is to eliminate the public utility director from the budget, and it's been seconded.
Mr. Williams?
If the motion is to eliminate the position, is that what we're asking today?
Yes, sir.
No, I'm not gonna vote on that, no, uh, because I don't know what's gonna follow.
Okay, Mr. Cox, you go ahead.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Mrs. Carmack?
Yes.
Mr. Byerly?
Yes.
Now, can I make another motion? I would like to make another motion that we add a public utilities engineering assistant. Is that labeled right, Mr. Sharnine?
It was a couple versions of the budget ago, so I was trying to pull it up and see exactly what we called it.
Engineer, I think you leave your word assistant off because that has connotations of administrative.
All right, sorry, utilities engineer.
Right. Correct, worth, yeah, utilities.
Engineer.
Engineer is what we're hiring at a scale of $107,964. Is that correct?
That's the, that's the benefits.
And, and, yeah, that includes benefits, absolutely. Well, that's the way I always like to talk. Don't tell me 50 and it's 83,000. Now, tell me what the whole thing costs, not all of it. Um, so it is 107,000. So the motion's on the floor to hire the utilities engineer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Sharnine, how does this fit into your plans? You're the county administrator.
Yeah, th- this, we can accommodate this. I believe this was our original proposal, um, in the beginning, uh, was for the engineer, so.
Why'd you change?
I, I think it was to add some additional on the facility side. Um, and there's, there's many things we would like to do in the budget, can't fund them all, so, um, you know, we had expanded it to add additional assistance on facility side, kind of having that dual role of the director position, not focusing just on the engineering side. But again, the engineering side is where I understand most of the need is and where there's that specific PE expertise, um, that's hard to replicate. Uh, so if, if we were to add one side or the other, then, then engineer is where I would put our, our resources.
But you, you just shared with us that under the original proposal for the uh, engineer position, that it was gonna be expanded responsibilities, and you're saying now with this position, those expanded. Those expanded responsibilities get truncated. Get pared back, is that correct?
Uh, either pared back or, um, the deputy county administrator position would, would just need to do some more, um, on the facility side, not the engineering. And, and with somebody now concentrating more on the engineering, um, probably leave a little more room for that.
Are we designing the work to be done around the people that we have, or are we going after getting people? To do the work that needs to be done? Which is it?
It's.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's both, um, you know, for example, I, I suggested we need a transportation manager, um, you know, the board. Chose not to fund that and that's fine. Again, there's lots of things we've posed that you choose not fund. That doesn't mean we're not going to do transportation projects. It just means. I have to do them, uh, or when we get a planning director, hopefully they'll help me with it, I'll still do it. But again, it's part of it is we propose. Uh, what we want, what we think we need, and part of it is we work with the resources we have or given, so it's, it's both.
Well, I'm not going to vote against getting Mr. Melis help. I came in good conscience to that, knowing. The situation they're in. And that said. I'm going to be watching and I'm going to be asking how well this position is working out going forward. But I always worry when you take a. Step back and you start changing positions up here, as Mr. Cox has said, on the fly. When we could have had this discussion with Mr. Melis when he was with us. We could have asked him these questions, engaged the consequences of our actions or inactions. That's not possible tonight. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. I've spent some time. With the utility staff too, not sitting around eating cookies and drinking punch, really talking about what they have to do. Uh, and where they're struggling. Uh, I continue to be troubled. Uh, that, uh. We have a county administrator who put together a plan for his staff. Uh, and we decide at the last minute that we know better than he and those staff members about what they need. And we're going to rearrange it. Hope it works out for the best. That gives me all kinds of concerns. Uh, that's kind of lack of management. Lack of direction. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We'll do the roll call vote now.
Mr. Williams. Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Nay.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye. Motion passes four one. Next, um, the grant writer.
Yes.
This all started with you and your motion, so, you know, you're going to make them.
Yeah. I would like to add, add the, um, grant writer position back in. Uh, I know now it will be to the tune of twenty-seven thousand dollars more. Um, after we funded the.
I'm, I'm sorry, I misspoke. The, um, the total increase is thirty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Thirty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-four, yeah. My whole push for the grant writer, it seems like we have grant opportunities all the time that, um. Mr. Sherdine and others said they don't have time to go after. On the flip side, I will. Mr. Sherdine, I think it's a great position. If you're not in support of it, you know, let me know and. I'll withdraw the motion, I'm.
This, this is one, um, I, I think I had, uh. Proposed to, to prior county administrators, I'm not sure they ever got floated to, to the board level through a budget proposal. It's something I've been interested in and seen a value in, proposed officially this year. Um, it sounded like we weren't going to fund it, so thinking to build the case, maybe to talk about it next year, I've been compiling a list of all possible grants that could apply to the county. Um, feel that I've just scratched the surface, but it's, you know, it's probably twenty pages or so of, of grant opportunities that would be applicable, so. I think it would be, uh, very easy for this position to be revenue positive and generate more revenue. Um, from outside sources, not from powattan taxpayers to help pay for things that we are doing and. If we find that it's not, then it's, you know, I would also be okay, uh, making that clear that, that we expect this position to. Bring in more than it costs, and if it doesn't, then, then we eliminate it, but I think we'll, uh, you know, just one or two potential grants. You could easily pay for a couple of years of it, for example, the, um, the ADA fighting Creek Park improvements, you know, that would be. Uh, let's say we could go after something like that again, that currently we don't have the time or resources to, you know, just that one grant would pay for this position for. Five, six years, but you're going to be getting more and more each year, so, um, I, I've. Seen great value in it and as I've been doing the research to try and build the case, thinking for the next year, I think there's a lot of opportunities out there. Um, and speaking to our person who was in the grant position prior, Ms. Alexander, um, she thought there was a lot of value in that position too. Um, whether it's this year or next, I, I think we should do it sometime, um.
Well, I'm going to make that as a motion. I think we should add that in the budget.
Okay, so the motion is that we, um, hire a grant writer. At, um. Eighty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars, does that sound correct? Including benefits. And we need a second on that. I'll second it. Produces revenue, I'll second it. The, uh, floor's open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Sherdine, when, um, you were asked to create a budget. At seventy cents. You eliminated this position. Then the budget went actually to sixty-nine cents, even less revenue. So. Why did you eliminate?
To, to help us get to that lower number. One thing we didn't do, because I, I think it would have been, um, probably presumptuous, but we didn't put any associated revenue with this position. Um, you know, we, we could have looked at. The expenditures and the cost of the position as well as some expected revenue, it would generate from what they get, but. Um, that would be such speculation to guess on the numbers, so we had zero as far as revenue on it. Um, so, yeah, it was just something, uh, that we were able to eliminate to get to that lower, that lower budget.
And then we lowered it even more. And so. The rationale is we hope it'll pay for itself. Mr. Williams?
There, there, therein is the conundrum. How do you measure? How do you measure against what we would already be bringing in in grants? You're doing the aggregate, we're already getting a lot of grants through. Public safety, you know, those guys are getting grants all the time. So what I'm going to be looking for. If you're going forward with this grant writer position, I want you to be able to quantify. What the position versus if we didn't have the position is bringing in in revenue, not. All revenue that we're currently getting through. The means by which we go after grants, you know, individually in the different departments. But what, what we're getting in the aggregate.
Yep, and, and I had the exact same thought, so, um, we've been cataloging what grants we currently get. Um, i- if we have this position, some of those, the, the departments would still do on their own, some of them particularly the public safety, it just makes sense for them to do, but some of them they could assist with, but. I would want to be able to show what new grants we're going after that we wouldn't without them, not just now they're signing one that. Public Works got before or, uh, Fire and Rescue got before that, that wouldn't be the intent of this position, it would be.
I, I'm, I'm not going to take up a lot of time with this, but I've said this before, if you watch the workshops. When you get ready to do a grant and you're getting ready to respond, either responding to a request for a proposal or something like that. Usually it falls in a certain domain, might be in IT, might be in public safety, but you have to have a body of knowledge to be able to respond. And that means going to that department and getting information, if you're the grant writer, and actually getting other people to assist you with the grant. So if you think that somebody is just going to be going and looking at on the state registry, said, ah, there's a grant opportunity. And pull it off and go off in the corner, write the grant, that's not going to happen. Because that person is going to have to go to the department that's affected by the grant to get information and request assistance with the grant application. That's my two cents.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. Sherdine. I'm looking at the personnel that you said we were going to add. And, um. One of them's Public Works, we just flipped that out, so there's no net change there. Sounds like we're adding. Before we start talking about the grant writer, we're adding thirteen people this year. Two communications officers. Librarian. Actually, it's twelve because a librarian is, is a trade, trade. You know, three sheriff deputies, it goes on, so I, I come up with a number of twelve that we already are adding this year. Uh, I, I think that's correct. And so this would take it to thirteen. I, I'm sorry, at some point, we got to just stop adding people to this county. You justify anything in the world, but. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I just can't support that.
All right.
So. The motion is to add a grant writer at eighty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars, it's been seconded. Let's do the roll call vote on that too. We started this with roll calls. I think Mr. Cox had a good suggestion there too. Let's just keep it rolling with those roll calls.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. McClung?
Yay.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye. Okay. Mrs. Carmack?
I'd like to make a motion to take five thousand dollars off the ten thousand dollar donation to Senior Connections and give that to Community Matters. And the do- donation to Senior Connections would remain the same as it did the previous year at five thousand.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Motion's been seconded, floor is open for conversation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Lachney with donations. Public entity. Uh, can we give them just to anybody or do they have to be a recognized entity, state corporation, commission?
Well, it needs to be a legal entity. If it's going to be an entity, it needs to be legally formed entity.
It's just going to have to be a legal entity, so. This Community Matters, a legal entity. I've never seen anything that, that shows that they have, uh, state corporation listing or anything else.
Subset of social services.
Community Matters is not.
Yes, it is. It was created under, yeah, she's, Jane Lloyd is an employee of social services.
But that's a Parks and Recs program.
It's not a Parks and Recs program.
Well, it certainly is a Parks and Rec program that's been administered by the wrong agency.
That's, doesn't make it a Parks and Recs program. Yeah, it was, it was found, Community Matters was founded with social services and during COVID.
So what is Community Matters then? You said it's a sub, so we give Department of Social Services money, why would we be giving them more money?
Well, because to give it to this subset, she does programming for fifty-five and up. You know, weekly lunches, classes, and my point being is we're, we're upping. Senior Connections donation, five thousand dollars, and we still have no idea what we're getting from Senior Connections, no idea whatsoever. At least this is local. It's, we can measure it, we can see it.
But it's already funded. If it's, it's being run by social services, it's already funded. I, I, that you.
Then I don't think we should be adding any additional funds to Senior Connections.
That would, that would be, that's a whole different.
That's fine, then that, we can amend my motion and say they don't need to be getting an additional five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um. Hold on, hold on a second.
Looking for clarification, same thing you are.
Hold on there a second, um. It, it, Mr. Latchney, is that a, a withdrawal of a motion or is it amend the motion?
Um, it sounds, it sounds like a withdrawal.
That's what it sounds like to me, yeah.
It sounds like a withdrawal of the motion.
So would you like to withdraw the motion?
A withdrawal of a motion.
Would you like to withdraw that motion?
Well, it's a compound, so you're withdrawing a compound and, and replacing it with a simple motion to.
Right.
Mr. Latchney, could we give this, the additional five thousand dollars directly to Community Matters if it's a subset of social services?
Well, I, I mean, I don't know what Community Matters is. If it's part of social services, you can certainly send money to social services, sure. I, I just don't know the structure there, I don't know.
Could, Mr.? Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question? For clarification.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mrs. Carmack, what I heard was, okay. Just, just, you know, forget Community Matters, let's take five thousand off of, off, off of, uh, Senior Connections.
I do want five thousand off of Senior Connections. Ideally, I think. Giving that money that we are going to give to Senior Connections with no question. To an organization that we can see the benefit of, I would prefer.
Okay, you just, a minute ago, you said, well, do it this way now, I'm trying to figure out, I'm not trying to be argumentative.
Ideally, guys, I want to take the five grand off Senior Connections and put it towards Community Matters. That's what I want to do. For, for more programming and funding that she provides rides, she provides meals, she provides classes, we see it. I mean, you, you all are acting like you've never even seen Community Matters. I mean, they've been around for. Since we've been in office.
Community Matters.
Yes.
Mr. Williams is over there, he's, he's.
Patiently raising my hand. I'd like to first establish what Community Matters is or isn't. Mr. Latchney, you're on.
I, I'm trying to figure it out as we go here.
Okay, because.
I don't know the answer.
I know what social services, but that department is, I know what it does. I don't see. Community Matters listed as a department. Or a. Program under social services, never been presented to me that way. It was presented to me as a group of individuals that came together in the community. They formed a board and they were interested in doing good things for seniors in this county. More recently. We've had representation that is something senior advisory or, you know, senior action committee. And I've asked for clarification on that, what is the difference, if any, between those two groups, because I'm trying to get my arms around it. But I do not believe. That Community Matters is part of social services. Now, you have an employee of social services who's facilitating rides and I understand. That right now, they are getting money from the Department of Rail and Public Transportation, albeit a small bag of money. For the volunteer ridership program, and I think they provide somewhere in the neighborhood. Of a hundred and eight, a hundred and ten trips last year. Okay? Then you have the issue about the classes that are being facilitated by Community Matters up at the landmark. Which are attended by a small number of people. Some of the classes, as many as three people, some may have as many as twenty-five, thirty, I don't know. I had the list, but anyway, the break has. But I'm not going to give money to social services on top of what we transfer to them. Saying that Community Matters is part of social services because they're not. Scott, that, that, whatever you want to do, you can do, but you can't say that they're part of social services.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lach, Mr. Lachney, you look like you're studying hard. Are you making any progress? That's what I wanted to know.
I, I'm, I'm looking at one of the budget work session agendas that mentions Community Matters, but it doesn't say. What it is, it just, it says they provide resources, recreation resources for older folks, the, it, none of the documents it can find. Clearly delineate how it was created or, or where the oversight comes from.
If. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
If we want to do, give money, we should be giving money to Parks and Recreation. For the creation or the maintenance. for the creation or the maintenance of programming, and we all know what those programs are. Similarly, if we're going to do something with social services, tell me what social services is doing. And if we're going to need that, we can include it in social services budget. But I don't want to try to concatenate Community Matters with social services, a state, local agency, when that's not the case.
Our website only has a handful of references to Community Matters. It's certain, it isn't clear from our county website or the budget documents what it is. I'm not, I'm not sure. So I can't answer the question. I don't know what it is from what I'm reading.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Lachney, I think that's the point. Nobody can define what it is. And I'm not going, I'm not going to send money to an entity that I don't know what it is. We'll send, so, you know, social, social services has, Department of Social Services has a budget. So does Parks and Rec. This is, this is in our donations category. Not in our funding category.
Correct.
So do we normally send donations to like the utility department? I mean, we don't send donations to our own internal. We fund them. We don't send them donations. Donations are for external organizations that are coming to us for support. I mean, what you've said is no, this, you and Mr. Williams don't agree on Department of Social Services and whether this is part of it or not, but in fact, we wouldn't be donating to an internal.
There were maybe a thought here. There's two pieces to this. One was a reduction in what was proposed for Senior Connections. That's, that's one matter. Then the other was potentially adding a same amount to Community Matters. Charlotte, if, if we need to do, look at exactly how that's structured, I don't know either tonight and the board say the future meeting wanted to add five thousand Senior Connections. That's, that wouldn't require a new public hearing. That would just be a budget amendment that we do.
Yeah, we can just do an amendment to the budget.
Yeah, so we, we could do that at any time if you want us to, to do a little research, see how that's structured, make sure it's proper to give a donation to them. We could handle the other part of Senior Connections, whether the board wishes to reduce that or not tonight, and then follow up even potentially the next meeting with adding five thousand for Community Matters if we find it structured properly to do so.
You're, what you're saying, Mr. Sharnan, is that you can take the five thousand off of Senior Connections tonight, investigate and explore to see if Community Matters is an actual bona fide group, whatever you want to call it, that we can donate five thousand dollars to in the future at the next meeting. And that can be done without a public hearing according, according to Ms. Schubert.
I mean, for that level of an amendment, we wouldn't need a public hearing for five thousand dollars.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, we're not going to be able to, I think, answer the questions either on the floor. So either, either you, you can still move ahead or if you want to have that information, again, it's, it's, the amount is so small, we can handle it later also.
So you want to restate this motion?
I recommend we withdraw the motion.
Okay. And what?
I want to reduce the donation to Senior Connections by five thousand dollars to the same funding we had last year.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
There's a second. We can do a roll call vote on that.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. McClung? Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye.
That is a four to one vote. Now. So now, when we, we just did that, that puts the five thousand back into the gas, the general fund there. And then if Ms. Carmack or anybody wants to bring that up after you investigate later, we can do that if the board so chooses to do that. Okay. Next thing that I have on my list was, uh, let me see. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's what, just trying to see if there was anything else CBT. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Carmack.
I would like to make the motion that we take for in the CIP, the one million dollars off the Carter-Gallier Boulevard and put that back in the CVTA fund.
We have a second? I'll second that. Floor is up?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I'm confused. We're taking a CIP item. Understand that, understand whether, what CIP, so it has to stay in the CIP.
I want to take it out of the CIP because.
It's wasted one-time money. You can't take it out of the CIP. It's got to stay in the CIP somewhere.
What is a million dollars going to do for us in this project? How much does a project cost?
Mrs. Carmack, that's not the question. You can't take it, you can't just take it out of the CIP. It's one-time money, so it's got to live over there.
Take it out. You sure you can take it out? You can take a project off the CIP. Why can't you?
You can take the project off, okay?
That's what I mean.
I want to know what, okay.
Yeah, take the project.
But you were moving the money. My, my problem, I understood.
Oh, I was being, I shouldn't have said that.
That, that's where I got confused, where you were moving the money. Okay, so you just want to eliminate a project?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
You still have the floor.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Bill. Want to make sure you.
Yep, you're good.
Mr. Sharnan, what does this do to our, our project? Does it have any impact on it at all?
I'm not sure it changes anything because one million, whether we're doing Carter-Gallier on its own or one million as part of a convenience center project that we're looking at, either way, one million is not going to do it. We were either going to have to bring in additional CVTA funds, general funds, borrow for it. So this was going to just be a piece of it anyways, and we're going to have to come back with a comprehensive funding plan for it. So this was more of a placeholder, moving towards it. So as long as we're not spending that money on something else and it's just going back into, would it go to capital maintenance? Where would it live after this?
CVTA funds. We were proposing to use CVTA funds to pay for that. So when she said go back to CVTA, it's just, we're just not going to use the CVTA money that we had allocated for that project.
But if, if, if we propose and the board were to adopt doing it again, either on its own or as part of a convenience center, then we would just pull it back out of CVTA to do it. So it.
But CV, okay, that's, that's road money, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I, I don't think it changes.
You keep mentioning a million, million-dollar community center. When have we even talked about that? We haven't even defined the need on that.
Convention centers. Convenience center.
Convenience.
Sorry, did I say community center?
It's on the brain.
Eastern convenience center.
All right, so what, this, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, clarify. Yeah, the motion is to remove that
Project from the CIP.
Carter-Gallier extension project from the CIP, which has been seconded. Any other conversation on the floor?
Still not clear with the county minister to say it. Now, when we say we're going to take and return to CVTA, my understanding was that the proceeds or excuse me, the revenues that we received from CVTA would be paying for Carter-Gallier for the principal and interest?
We don't have a final price for it yet, but in, in concept, that had been the thought is we would borrow for, we would use some upfront CVTA money for some of the road infrastructure. The rest of it, we would probably borrow for and then use that annual incoming CVTA revenue.
What do we have in the capital improvement plan today? Is that money from the general fund or is that money that we're anticipating coming from the revenues from CVTA?
That was CVTA funding, correct?
Excuse me?
Yeah, CVTA.
From the revenues?
What we get from.
Funded from the revenues from, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So there's no money there to do?
We do, we have a CVTA, a pot of money of CVTA that's building annually. We've been receiving it and have not spent much. So it's, it's building. So this would be putting that million essentially back into that. So it would be available for, it would still be available for Carter-Gallier at some point. It just would be earmarked for it. It could be available for other transportation projects. It would just be instead of earmarking it for Carter-Gallier in the CIP, it would be returning it.
So what are we saying? We're not going to do Carter-Gallier? That's what you're, that's what you're saying. If you're taking the money, you're saying you're not doing it.
Mr. Chair.
If that's a decision, I want to be clear that, you know, that's what we're doing.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
In order to build Carter-Gallier, usually CIPs give, in, in my estimation, you give a kind of a realistic number of what the project's going to cost. Either fund the project fully, get an actual amount of what it's going to cost, or don't bother. Right now, you have a million dollars earmarked for something that you don't know if it's going to be five million, fifteen million. Furthermore, we have a limited amount of CVTA funds. About last February, March timeframe, we voted on three projects that we wanted to prioritize unanimously with CVTA funds. Holly Hills Turn Lane, Trent Home Turnway, Turn Lane, and the intersection at thirteen and sixty. Those were the three projects that we wanted to prioritize. Why Carter-Gallier has gotten put back in here, I'm not exactly sure. And speaking of the convenience center, that is something probably we should put on our May agenda to discuss and what, we've been farting around with that for four years now. It's time to do something with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Those are great comments. I like that a lot. And I'll tell you that the Carter-Gallier extension, me personally, I don't recall ever voting on that to be put into the CIP. Maybe we did, but I just don't recall that ever being voted on. The convenience center has been an issue with me all along. I think the citizens of the county want that, and I'm all for, let's do the convenience center, get that done. We've been on a PPEA project for well over a year and, and we're nowhere with it. We don't even know what the project's going to cost at this point. There's no fixed cost to it. I, I think that, you know, we need to take some action and move on. But I do want to make sure that I'm understanding this million dollars come from, as Mr. Williams pointed out, it come from the Central Virginia Transportation Authority. That's where that funding come from. That wasn't funding that come from per se county taxes or something. So my question there is, when that money comes off of this, is that money stay in the CVTA line item we have that has funding in it now? We're just waiting to do these other projects that we have voted on.
Yes, it, so essentially what I, I a lot of accounting terms, but I used part of what's called use of fund balance to use what we'd already collected. And then we're also budgeting, anticipating, collecting more, but where the one million we were using from what we already know, we've already collected over the last couple, year and a half or so.
Right.
So that will come off a use of, the use of fund balance. And basically, it means we're not using any of those funds currently.
I got it. I got it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Responding to Mrs. Carmack's, you know, we don't know the cost. Do we know the cost of the community center or the senior center? That was five hundred thousand, I believe, that got put in. It's not exactly definitive figures, is it? It's something, or it was something.
Correct, and that was preliminary to get started.
So Mr. Sharnan, it's Carter-Gallier, the PPEA, is that dead? I mean, what, I mean, is, when last time I heard, they had the work group? They were doing the final, what?
Correct. So the, we had gotten the, the final proposal from the proposer, work group review that had some suggested changes, additional information questions they wanted. The applicant is finalizing that, and my understanding is they should have all of that information to us, I believe, in two weeks or so. So then the working group would review it one last time, make a recommendation to proceed or not proceed to the board, and then you all had requested before we take it to public hearing, have a work, a workshop with working group and the applicant as well. So that would be, yeah, potentially May or June, we would be on target for the board to workshop on it and see what you all think and what questions and feedback you have on this final proposal through that.
So at that time, we don't need the million dollars? May I?
No, it, it doesn't need to be here in the CIP.
It doesn't need to be there, then I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, great. Any other comments? So the motion is to remove the Carter-Gallier extension from the CIP. Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yep.
Mr. McClung?
Yep.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye.
Okay, next, um, fifty thousand. Is that where you have on your list there, Ms. Carmack?
Correct. Off the company one floor refinishing.
Where is that in the budget? I'm sorry.
That's, I believe. I will be specific, yeah, hang on. All right, I will, I propose making a motion to take fifty thousand dollars off the floor refish, refinishing for company one. CIP.
Do we have a second on that? I'll second that. All right, floor is open for conversation. Mr. Cox?
What, what number is that?
I don't know where it is, uh, which.
Help me find it.
I have eight thousand. Tommy, Charlotte, can you assist him? Okay.
Is it under utilities?
Facilities, facilities. Well, you all are looking for that.
Sorry, this was company one?
Yes. My thought was that we just spend a substantial sizable amount of money with the recent addition there and that they can use some of the donations to refinish their floor.
I'm still trying to find it. Where's? What is it?
Page sixty-one of your CIP.
Which CIP? You've given us two CIPs.
The most updated CIP, which would be in April fifth, I believe.
Okay, so it's a, it's a list of things.
It, it's like maybe eighth or ninth down from the top, apparatus floor cleaned and epoxy coated.
Do you see it?
Yeah, I found it now. I'd like to hear from the fire chief. Chief Warner? In a budget for a reason. And just to tell the volunteer, just to tell them, though, y'all got to go raise the money. Doesn't, it's a need. This is under facilities and ground maintenance.
This actually is a project that was taken on, it might have been just prior to this board or at the very beginning of your, of your tenure, is, uh, in prior to the passing of the addition, is we wanted to remodel the floor in the base space. There's already money set aside for that. I think it's just going by memory, don't quote the exact number, but a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That was three or four years ago when we got that quote. The facilities folks feel like that the work that needs to be done with the cost that increases over the course of time, that thought, that's what they felt like they would help to, to make that project whole. I just caution you, you make my job very difficult if you tell our volunteers how to spend their money that's donated to them, to their 501(c)(3) that's run by their own board, you just really make my job very, very difficult. Please be careful.
Comments?
I don't need to hear anymore.
When was this started, the, the floor project? When was it started?
I'm just going by memory, sir, is that, I want to say it was at the end of the last board or at the beginning of your term.
Right.
And when we started the project, it was prior to COVID.
Right.
But we could not complete the project when we started it because we had significant amount of moisture issues underneath the station. Facilities of things had, we think we have remedied that situation. And now is, it just happens to be that time has passed that we're, we want to continue with that project.
And it's fifty thousand dollars, correct?
Above what we already have in the CIP.
Yeah, you have a hundred and forty in the CIP for it now. Am I, did I hear you right?
That is based off memory.
Yeah. Okay, it could be a hundred in the CIP.
Yeah, okay, it could be a hundred in the CIP.
It's, there's a figure in there for that project from three to four years ago.
So is, that money is still there to do this project, right?
It is one of our capital projects that's still outstanding.
Yep. How much, how much is the addition that we approved for company one?
Oh, I don't, what's, I don't have the final figure in my top of my head.
I'm going to tell you, it's one point eight million dollars if my memory's close, and I, I don't think I'm off by much. I might be off a little bit.
I think the board actually approved more.
Yeah, well, there was an increase, you know, all, everything was COVID and made things go up. And I would be one that thinks every volunteer in this county, and I've lived in this county for quite some time. And I can remember when that was a two-bay cinder block building. And what they do, those men and women, it's amazing. And I'd hate to think that a fifty thousand dollar approval or denial would upset them with a one point eight million dollar coming in. I mean, the money is, is the money, and it's the taxpayers' money, and you guys provide a service that's unbelievable. I mean, you do.
I agree with you, Mr. Byerly, but please, please don't. When, when you're asking volunteers to, to spend their money, let them spend it the way their board prefers to spend it.
Are you referring to the fact of, of use, the, the donated money? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, that part of it, I, I, I'm not, because me personally, I would have talked to whoever is doing our construction job when we settled that and say, you know, you guys do this floor too for this deal in there. I mean, that's where I would have been on, just letting you know. That's, to, to get that floor done, I think it's probably important. I wouldn't disagree with you on that. I mean, you guys are on it every day. You know what it is, and whether it's slick or, you know, it's to preserve the floor or anything like that. But I do think that, you know, whoever the company is we contract with, you know, you're just going to put a sealer on it. I'm assuming some type of sealer, paint.
But that, the part of the bays were not part of the project for the addition.
Right. No, I'm one point eight million, I get it, you know, it's not part of putting some sealer on the floor. I get it.
When, when we started, we wanted the bay completed prior to the addition.
Right.
It, it just didn't happen that way.
When is that supposed to begin, if you indulge me a little bit there?
Where we, we have received our sixty-five percent set of plans. We're going to meet with the architect within the next probably two weeks, and we'll have a better estimated cost on it. And then we'll review the changes that the fire administration, career staff, and volunteers, and facilities, when we say, look at the sixty-five percent set of plans to move forward. And then it's going to really move rapidly after that, because when it's a sixty-five percent, we're, next thing is ninety percent percent in permitting. So.
Right.
And going out to bid. So it's going to happen pretty rapidly as, as spring goes on.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank all of your volunteers very much.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question I'd like to ask the chief. You and I had a conversation today down in the basement. I ran into you. And we talked about the fact that the volunteer program in Palatang County seems to be the hole in the donut. The rest of the world around us, it's not happening like it's happening here in Palatang County. We've been able to buck the trend nationwide in being able to sustain our volunteer program in this county, unheard of. Now, we didn't do it by taking back or telling the volunteers what they were going to be doing with their donations. So people will know, don't they, weren't they created with private funds a lot of their stations today?
Correct, yes, sir. Yes, sir. All of them were, were, were built by the volunteers themselves. And then obviously, company one was, was built by the county. And then, and then in, in two thousand or nineteen ninety-nine, and then two thousand and ten, company.
I was on the board, and I witnessed firsthand what happened under your predecessor. When we had some heavy-handed things going on with county administration and the former chief.
Correct.
And I remember the detrimental effect. It almost killed the program. So if we can somehow in a small way show our appreciation by picking up one-fourth of the total cost of a project and their station, I'm for that, just like I was for the fire station, something that was being argued when we first came on the board about moving it out again, something that had been in the capital improvement plan since twenty fifteen. I'm not for doing that. I'm for working with the volunteers and showing my appreciation for what they do for this county and what they save, not just in lives, but save the taxpayers in money. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think the county's funding a hundred percent of that, not twenty-five percent of it.
It will be a hundred percent of it.
It is a hundred percent. The county's funding, not twenty-five percent. Just want to clarify that. Go ahead, Mr. Cox.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Hold on, Mr. Cox has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Carmack, you didn't vote for the funding, the increase for the fire station.
Correct.
You didn't like that. I understand that. But to take maintenance, which is needed, and try and take that hostage, if you will, because you didn't like the amount of money that was going out there in the first place. This is an expensive project, and it's a good project, and I'm glad we're doing it, and we need it. You had Fire Chief telling you, your funding mechanism, if we, this were to be eliminated, will cause him all kinds of problems with the people who are just critical to us, which are the volunteers. I would remind everybody that when we look at the model, and the model, you, y'all are fond of saying it just has sixty-nine cents and never changes. That tells you what happens if you don't change it. The model tells you what you need to do to change it. But one of the drivers of the deficits that are coming at us, and there are two of them, schools and the cost of increased personnel for fire and EMS. And the volunteers are the way we slow down that cost. Your concerns or your concerns, your solution gives me all kinds of pain, okay? That this is, that's, that's not the solution that makes sense for this county, Ms. Carmack. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would like to reply to that.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Um, my solution was based upon, you know, one of the workshops when I talked to, when we discussing with Del Warner, what they did with donations, and he said a lot of minor maintenance issues and equipment. This was not meant to be a Karen doesn't like the volunteers stump speech. If it, if the fifty grand or the two hundred thousand dollars to refinish the floor, as you two gentlemen are, you know, doing the campaign speech, is going to decrement our volunteers all over the county, then I'll withdraw the motion.
Second it.
But I will say, one thing I think is important, and I'm not campaigning. This is another area, kind of like you were lecturing about the schools earlier. The funding for this and the constant ask for money can go unchecked. And, you know, they can run very quickly to the, we can't ever say anything against our volunteers. That's all I'm saying. It's, I'm not saying that, that they do that. I'm not saying, but I'm just saying, it should be questioned and scrutinized just like any other ask. That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So the motion's been withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay, motions were. Next on the agenda is the.
And since we're on that.
It's audio, huh?
You can withdraw that one.
That's the audio video for company two?
Correct.
We'll withdraw that one too?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so then we're to two hundred thousand dollars in emergency alerting system. That's for company two. You want to withdraw that one too?
That's fine. Nobody wants to question, that's fine.
I, I understand. Okay. So we're through all of that. So you want to, want to make a motion to approve the budget?
No, sir.
We have, did we dress cameras at the high school, adding those into it?
No, she just removed that.
The alerting, okay, that was part of the alerting.
Yeah, she was going to use the two hundred, two, two hundred thousand from company two's emergency alerting system to pay for the cameras in Palatang High School, but she withdrew that part, portion. Did you have something you wanted to say, Ms. Shubert?
I was just going to say that I'm working with the schools on some of their CIP things. I can't remember if the cameras are in there. The school construction money that they're getting from the state all this year has to be spent by June thirty of twenty-four. So I believe cameras may be in that to be able to use the rest of those school construction money. I had a list. I haven't brought it to you because we're still compiling some of the estimates on some things that they wanted to use. But I, I just wanted to say that that may be still coming and may be taken care of with their school construction money that they've gotten from the state. That we're just holding for them in the CIP.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I have some CIP things I'd like to talk about. We just went through Mrs. Carmack's.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm just trying to get to the budget. I'm not, it's not a Ms. Carmack versus Mr. Cox.
No, 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 no.
I'm going on that road.
No, 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 this is just what.
I, I don't play that.
I have.
So if you want the floor to speak, you go right ahead, sir.
Right, great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
This budget has a one-year CIP in it. That really gives me all kinds of problems. That's back to where we got started with prior county administrator. Now, we've taken roughly thirty million dollars out of revenue over the next ten years out of our CIP. And that's going to require a major restructuring of it. Priorities will change. We're going to have to look at everything. As I look at it and begin to think about it, I begin then to divide our CIP into two major groups. One is the maintenance kinds of things that we have to do, whether it's roofs, whether it's buying new vehicles. There's just a whole host of those, and those are the things you go through with the CIP first. And then everything else is at the tail end. New initiatives are at the tail end, so you have, you have to triage those. There's a bunch of those. I don't know where, where any of all is, where it's going to land, but it's going, we have, it's a severe haircut to the CIP. So I took that approach and went through the twenty twenty-four CIP, looking for those things that I thought was an initiative versus something that had to be done. And the only thing that really falls into that category is the fiber network expansion, which is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and not another three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What I'd like to do is remove that from the CIP. I'm, I, I don't know enough about it or how it'll prioritize against others, but when we come back in October, we weigh that against all of our other needs and figure out where, where it sits. That, that's, everything else on here is either funded by grants, okay? Or looks like it meets that bar of maintenance. So that's, that's what I'd like to do. That's, that's a motion to remove IT oh oh two six, which is a fiber network extension.
I'll second.
Okay, so floor is open for conversation. I got questions. So we, that initially started out as seven hundred thousand, if my memory's.
Three fifty and three fifty.
Yeah, and, and we cut three hundred and fifty thousand off of it for however we get to the sixty-nine cents, whatever, you know. Amazing how you do have to cut things to get to the sixty-nine cents. But when we got to that, there's three hundred and fifty thousand still left in there, correct? In the CIP.
Three, no, it's seven hundred thousand, it's three fifty and twenty-four, three fifty and.
In twenty-five?
Yes.
As opposed to it all being in twenty?
Right, exactly.
So what you want to do with that is repeat that to me one more time so I can be.
I want to remove it from the twenty twenty-four CIP.
Okay.
Okay, and we will review that.
Okay.
Okay, in October to see if we, how does this program stack up against other programs that we've got to fund? It may be the best thing we're going to do.
The three fifty fiber part, that's what you're talking about.
Because it's an expansion where we, we're operating today. It may not be the best efficient, most efficient way, but this is projects that are new projects, it's new things, not things we have to do. And I just want to, I want to, I want to put that against everything else we've got to do because there's some projects that are in our CIP that are not going to get funded, but just not. You can't take thirty million dollars out and expect it all to stay the same. We gave that money back to the citizens when we reduced the tax rate.
That's what they wanted.
Yep, that's what they wanted.
So the, 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 so that broadband, that fiber, was initial, was it initially to go down Route sixty, is Mr. Woods here? Want to come on up, sir? The broadband, the seven hundred thousand that Mr. Cox is referencing here, wouldn't that initially to, I mean, I guess initially still is, to cover fiber up and down Route sixty into some county locations?
The plan is to interconnect all of the county facilities, both the schools and the kind of government facilities from company two to the Pocahontas Landmark Center. I'm at twenty-four sites. You don't think about it being twenty-four, but it's twenty-four.
So there's twenty-four county sites?
Right.
That would be connected upon this project being completed?
That's correct.
And if, if the, if the county partnered with the school system on this, can we get some assistance through E-rate? Is that a potential possibility that they would pay? I know in Goochland they did, and that saves the taxpayers here in this county money if we find a way to collectively work with the school system for broadband. And over a long period of time, that becomes a pretty substantial savings compared to what we're paying now.
Yep, and we understand, we've reached out to those that issue E-rate and understand it is a possibility. So we're trying to get more information on that. Some portion of it would not be, but we don't know exactly how much. So also, if we defer this until, say, October and look at this, hopefully we'll have definitive information by then that there's a very good chance for E-rate, or no, when you either look at not doing it or funding it ourselves, so.
Awesome. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make it clear, I, I'm not, it's not killing the project.
No, I get it.
Putting it.
Yeah, moving it down.
Yep, that's all.
Okay, let's do a roll call on that. Mr. Sharnon?
Mr. Williams?
Where's the motion?
You want to repeat it there, Ms. Cox?
To remove IT oh oh two six fiber network extension, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the FY twenty-four CIP.
Hi.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye. I am looking for a motion to approve the budget.
The budget and the CIP?
It's the CIP and budgets. Yeah, exactly.
I'll make a motion.
They are all the same, they're two different things.
There's one motion.
Correct, one motion under the two.
I, I move to approve resolution R two zero two three dash two one, as amended tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Does that cover us close enough with our, perfect, okay. Any conversation, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cox.
The items we discussed tonight don't bother me. The process bothers me a lot. It's ample time for this to be worked out and discussed at workshops we had, so we can have an opportunity to make better decisions. So this really is a wreck in terms of properly planning and looking at what we're doing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
If y'all maybe remember, I was alone vote against sixty-nine cents. And that motion was made by Mr. McClung. I immediately asked, where is the plan? Because we had gone through. Because we had gone through iterations of what the budget would look like at higher expenditure rates or, excuse me, tax rates. So we knew what was in the plan associated with a given rate. As I said at that meeting, I can't vote for something until I see the plan. I'm not going blindly go out there and vote and then find out the consequences of the vote later. We've since learned that there is, of course, a relationship between the budget and the capital improvement plan. Mr. Cox, working with Tommy, had learned that once you start lowering the revenues over on the budget side, then you have less money going for projects in the CIP. Whether it's principal and interest or whether it's pay-as-you-go. But I think the figure Mr. Cox just mentioned was thirty million. And now we're back to where I wanted to get away from under the previous board, and that is voting for a capital improvement plan that's only for one year. And once again, we're looking at, well, we'll figure it out three months from now. We'll come back to it in whatever month. Folks, that's not the way you do a budget. It's not the way you do planning. So the people that were trying to follow what we advertised and what we discussed and what we are proving tonight, these are my notes trying to keep up with the different figures that are being thrown out. And I was able to somewhat keep up because I'm familiar with this stuff. And the people in the audience, the people watching, I question whether they really know what we were doing. In some cases, it's fairly straightforward. In other cases, you have to know. Now, when we advertise the budget, I ask the question, okay, what we have is seventy cents. It's not sixty-nine. But I was told that it was close enough and people could go and they could look at our previous meetings and they could get an understanding, I believe, of what the budget was. Again, I don't think that's the way you inform the public. Nor do I think the way that we have done the budget tonight is in any way the appropriate way to facilitate you in the understanding of the work that we're doing as a board. In fact, I would say that it's antithetical to the way you should do a budget. We were lucky enough to have the chief here tonight to answer questions. But conversations like, you know, with the engineer or whether it's going to be assistant engineer, think of how much better the public could have been facilitated had we had Mr. Melis here. Or if we'd asked these questions in the workshop, instead of showing up with a laundry list that we had to go through tonight, I'm not sure everybody understands. So again, I'm hopeful this doesn't happen again. I don't blame staff. The responsibility rests with us. We're your elected representatives. We're the ones that we said you need to vote for us so that you can get the customer service you deserve. If we fall short in that goal in keeping you informed, it's on us. That's my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other comments? I have some comments. Um. Yeah, we did. It is, you know, we need to keep you informed. There's no doubt. You know, we cut a tax rate uh from seventy seven cents to sixty-nine cents, eight pennies. And when you do that, there's money. I've heard the comment, you know, you 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 got to find the the wasteful spending. When you cut that much, you're you're cutting some money out somewhere. We sit here and talked about it tonight. There's a lot of things that have been cut. If you don't understand what's been cut, you know, we failed at delivering the message to you. The the plan, the plan that I had was I talked to the county administrator. I talked to Mr. Voe. I talked to planning uh or uh Ms. Schubert. I talked to different people in the staff to find out. We've had nine meetings. And these numbers pretty much have all been in these meetings somewhere or another along the way, and it is a complex issue. It's not simple and easy. I have a little bit of budget knowledge. Um I did run a business in this county for practically twenty-five years. The the informations there, how it gets received is not necessarily always, you know, what I would say, correct or proper. Uh but I hope you and the audience do know and do understand that everything that we did tonight with the budget, you're still at sixty-nine cents. If we went from twelve employees to thirteen, you're still at sixty-nine cents. Um. Nothing changed in that category. We 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 we've changed some things around with funding, but the interesting thing is, when you do this, how do you do this and stay at sixty-nine cents? You know, I think that uh the Capital Maintenance Reserve Fund has five point six million, or in February, it had five point six million dollars in it. I asked the finance director in April, uh April the third, I believe, what she felt it would be at the podium, and she answered uh when we finish fiscal year twenty-three, June the thirtieth, her projection is it'll be nine million dollars. I don't think that you're in financial dire straits, Palatine. I don't see it. I don't get it anywhere I go with this. I think citizens are in financial dire straits with the cost of what it takes to live uh right now with inflation, with everything else that's going on. But the county seems to be plugging along okay. We provide a service. We've got great fire and rescue. We've got a great sheriff's department. We have an excellent school system. You know, we're we're providing the service and we're trying to hear of all the other services that you want and you want enhanced. And at the same time, lower the taxes. That's not an easy job. Uh, you know, you you you, everything that you want or you get, it's it it costs. So I will uh commend this board for getting to a place to where you reached a budget that I think personally, and I only speak for me, nobody else up here, I think it's a good budget for the citizens and for me. I think that, you know, I've watched some faces in this crowd tonight when the the five percent was talked about uh from county staff. I think that, you know, if the if the morale is going to be affected in sixty days, I certainly hope that we have the opportunity here from the fifty-eight thousand dollar plan that the taxpayers are paying for on how to get a much more competitive salary for the county staff comes into play, and I hope that we as a board can do what they suggest. That's what I hope. I can tell you, I have personally seen letters from an adjacent county offering people in this county who work in this county letters to go to work for a lot more money. Fortunately, those good employees went and talked to a county administrator and the county administrators that I've been associated with since I've been up here have found a way to retain these employees into that. Thank you, Mr. Sharnin. The real world is, it's hard to find somebody that's good, that'll do a job, go above and beyond. I talked to a lady at the Public Works Department who does so many things. She named off a litany of things she does that goes outside of her parameters of her job. She's lived in this county her whole life. And she wants to continue working here, but she wants to be paid a fair amount. And I'm okay with that. So when this comp and pay plan comes along, we're just going to have to find a way to work that out. That's what we're going to have to do. That's our job up here. We can try to make you happy, try to make you vote for us, try to make you do anything that we want to do, but the bottom line is, we got to take care of you. That's what you elected us to do. I do think it's a a good budget. And I do think that the information has been out for nine weeks. We've got numbers. I got a book. I don't know how many pages. That's just what's here at my my office at my house. It's much more than that. Uh, it's not an easy job by any means. It's not. To try to find five people that will agree on all the numbers, I don't think it's happened since I've been on this board. Maybe it hadn't happened on any of them recently. But that's my two cents worth on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Um. You're, I'm glad you're happy with the budget. Um, I'm not because I don't know what the budget is. We've only done a piece of the CIP. And so the ramifications of what we've done are going to be clear and clear. We're not going to be able to do, in my best guess, the kinds of capital programs that are currently in the CIP. And that's a cost simply of moving the money from one side of the, one side to the other side, giving it back sooner. So not knowing the full ramifications of that makes it really hard to talk about whether it's a good budget or a bad budget or it's the best we could do. I supported sixty-nine cents. I didn't have a problem with that, but I also knew the impact that that was going to cause. And uh how much work that's going to cause us uh in the future. So I'm withholding judgment on this budget until I know what it really is. Uh and that probably won't be until uh November, December, where we really understand what's happening. So uh I don't like process. I don't like cutting it short. But that's where we are, and I'm ready to vote anytime you are, sir.
Thank you very much for those comments, Mr. Cox. I appreciate them. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye. Like I showed, that was a four to one, but.
Um. Beat, under old business there, Mr. Shaw?
Yep, and this is resolution R twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two, and this is appropriating the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget and capital projects.
I move to approve.
Be important?
I move to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Thank you.
Has to be amended. We took stuff out of.
As amended.
Okay.
I I actually thought about that, and I was like, well, maybe it'll carry over the one. All right, anyway.
As amended, so restate the the motion.
I move to approve resolution R two zero two three dash two two as amended.
Second. Conversation?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Cox.
This has got a, this is the um appropriation, and this had a caveat in there for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What what do we need? We weren't going to appropriate the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We, I got to figure out what 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 we did a minute ago, how kind of took it out and 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 put the appropriation to the healthcare part. Right? Right, Mr. V? Ms. Schubert, you agree? Right, Mr. Shaw? Exactly.
Yeah, so I I believe the as amended.
As amended.
Right, it does. Does that cover it, Mr. Latchney? He doesn't know.
Um, yeah, I'm a little concerned that the schools, if the state authorizes the two percent, that they're going to claim that that still exists. I mean, we, I think we need to clarify that no matter what the state does, that four hundred and fifty will never be appropriated for the two percent, just to be clear.
Okay. Should should we do that in the form of a motion to 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 make sure there's?
Well, I think because we have this, we resolved that Palatine County Board of Supervisors hereby appropriate net of four hundred and fifty thousand for the schools' two percent pay raise. Um. I I don't know how, just something to make it clear to the schools, you're not getting the state raise if it comes, just I think so that there's no confusion and the schools don't make a claim later that they're entitled to that money as well.
Right.
Yeah, my, earlier when I asked for a commitment to look at two percent, that would just be on the administration side. Schools chose insurance over two percent this year, and that's that's fine.
Mr. Brown? So do you want a a motion on that for us to be clear?
I I just think as part of the motion, just just for clarity, just so we're not arguing with the schools in two, three months.
Right.
If the gov, if the legislature gives them two percent, that they're not arguing that they that's conditionless. So just something added to the motion to make it clear a state granting them a additional two percent has no effect on this appropriation.
Okay. Mr. Brown, you you want to do that? You want to change your motion?
Yes, a state granting two percent has no impact on this appropriation.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I'd like to withhold the whole amount for healthcare, not appropriate it tonight till we have a real, because once we pass it to them, they can spend it any way they want to. I would like not to appropriate that money till we have a clear administrator to superintendent understanding of how that money is going to be spent before we turn it loose. Everything but but that.
Okay.
I I, you know, I'm not trying to take it out. I just, I want clarity.
Right.
Because they haven't spent it. They haven't spent it that way in the past.
Yeah, it's it. I mean, the number is pretty clear. I mean, it's nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. That was right the very first time I said it wasn't. Um, and that money is to go directly to offset and equalize the healthcare costs through the school systems. And I I agree with you. Let's make sure that it's clear. They understand that, and hopefully they got that with what I just said, and that should cover us.
Yeah, and what Mr. Cox is saying is, once you appropriate that nine hundred and ninety-eight, and they do whatever they want, they can say, we're going to use it for something else, so.
Which is what they can do with anything that we give them.
Well, exactly.
So anything.
So the appropriation to the school would be the one point, that would be the increase of one point five million.
In total, yeah, 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 that's correct.
In total, yeah, the four fifty's out of it, okay? Because it's sitting over here as part.
Yep.
Until we have whatever amounts to MOU.
Yeah.
So so the motion would be to appropriate the budget less nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand to the schools pending further discussions or something to that effect. So literally, you're appropriating the budget as amended less than nine ninety-eight. You're not appropriating that tonight.
We're we're not appropriating the nine ninety-eight tonight. That's the healthcare part of this.
Right.
And the reason for not appropriating that is why.
Let's, so there is a, we haven't talked with the schools about, I haven't talked with the schools about that. I don't know that, I don't know that Tygen knows. I want I want clarity between our county administrator and their superintendent about how this money is going to be used, not how it might be used.
Right.
And if they only need nine hundred thousand, that's all they get.
It it it's, it's up to the cost of it. I mean, I know the number that they presented and they've said, and I would think there's been conversation between you and Dr. Tygen about that. Um, but I do get your point. We want to ensure that that's what that money is used for.
Yes.
Period.
Mr. Chair, how can we do that? Like, say we don't do the appropriation. How can it be any different even after the two of them talk? I mean, I'm I'm with you, but I think we all are with you, but is it going to be any different when he talks to them? How would, how do we ensure that as?
Well, ask a lawyer.
I mean, you could, let's say he speaks with the superintendent. They agree, yeah, we're going to use this nine ninety-eight. He could come back with the little two paragraph MOU that they were going to appropriate this money, and they sign off that that's going to be used for this. That would be one way to give us some assurances as a little side agreement with them on what the money's for.
Perfect.
Okay.
Well, and if that doesn't work, then, you know, if they didn't, if they don't agree, that would stop, I'm sure that, well, uh at that point, we keep the nine ninety-eight.
Well, we'll take it, we'll take a separate appropriation to reduce that money. Well, it would take, it would take a separate appropriation to reduce that money.
Man, I'm, I'm good with that. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Slippery slope here. We're going beyond categorical budgeting. We're doing conditional budgeting. But we're saying now a specific part of your budget, we're going to have to have an MOU for? Is, is that what I'm hearing?
I, I'm saying the, to appropriate the money, we want to know where it's going.
Right. Why don't we do that for the whole budget?
Well, we can do it categorically, six categories.
I know we can. But, but this, this is something different from categorical budgeting. And if we're going to good, go into this direction of where, you know, we're saying, you know, we want something to guarantee it's going to be spent in this way. Well, why don't we do an MOU for the school's budget in general?
I don't think we can do that. This is, I would.
I didn't think we could.
No, we can't. I would argue that because this is a very specific targeted, additional appropriation of additional money, sort of like we have an agreement on what happens to un-UCIP funds, the, you know, what, what happens to, we, we have side agreements for little pieces of a pie that they want.
I don't think it's going to be a problem regardless.
Yeah, I don't think it is either.
I think the conversations aren't been had. I think we know whether, yeah.
I think they know, they know, you know, they've said what they wanted, so.
God, I agree.
All right. So you've amended your motion.
I've amended like three times. What, so are we taking out the 998 until the memorandum of understanding is conducted between?
And you may not need that. It may be a conversation. Everybody may be happy once they've had the conversation. We may not need anything beyond a conversation.
Brett comes back to us and tells us you can appropriate it, we'll appropriate it.
Okay.
So.
Does that work for you, Tom?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's all I suggest is, is you just a motion to amend the budget as amended or adopt the, appropriate the budget as amended except for the 998,000.
Right.
Which will be appropriated at some future point.
I move, we appropriate the budget minus the 998,000 until.
The budget is amended.
The budget is amended.
But you vote, you're moving to appropriate the budget as amended, less than 998,000.
Right. So that the motion on the floor is that we will appropriate the funding, the budget, with the exception of the 998,824, until there's been the conversation with the superintendent and the county administrator, that that's what it's going to be used for.
Is that, should we add from the school transfer since the 998 is the budget, is the whole thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we all, I mean, I think the record is going to clearly reflect that that's where that number came.
We're all on the same page of understanding what we're doing. All right.
So we got to vote.
Do we have a, a second?
Well.
Okay. Now we can have a conversation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I didn't vote for the budget, so obviously I won't be voting for the appropriation. I won't go through the same reasons. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Shaw.
Mr. Williams. Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Byerly.
Aye.
Now we're at our final public comment period. Anyone wish to come speak to the board? Floor is open. You have three minutes if you're speaking on behalf, and then if you're speaking on it yourself, on an individual, if you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have up to five minutes.
Steve at Barrow, 3492, Richard's wrong. Oh, I had planned on speaking tonight, believe that or not. Probably don't, so be it. Oh. I keep hearing this thing about the comp and pay, it's going out there. Like, the only reason we're doing it is to make us competitive with other counties. I think if we go back and look what went on the past last year, previous county administrator, we had to have this audit done, this comp and pay done. Because the previous county administrator gave raises that were not, I think, supposed to be done or as much it was done. So now we've got to rework the whole system, bring people up to the proper pay grade. I'm not saying our employees don't need to be paid and taken care of. We need to really bite down into it. The reason we're doing it, because the previous county administrator did what he did and this board allowed it and finally made a decision to do something about it and get rid of him. Now, far as the school situation, I applaud you all for maybe keeping that money under control. We got a school administration, school system can't keep our kids under control of what happened in the last week. And y'all talking about trusting them with the money? It's a very scary thought. Now, I keep hearing talking about we've given the taxpayers a tax cut. We did take it from 77 cents down to 69. But we seem to forget assessments went up. So the amount of money y'all had to work with went up. And I appreciate the hard work y'all put in. I can, I mean, it's doing a budget is no fun, especially the volume y'all have to do. But let's not forget, y'all have increased refunds. I mean, you know, funds to use. So it's not like y'all just being licensed to hear, here's money, y'all can have it back. We asked for it and we got it. Well, y'all still getting probably as much or more money. You bound to get more money than what you got last time proportionate wise. We figure everything out. Because the tax rate should have went down to six to seven cents to be neutral, so to speak. And that's all, you can't do that. And yes, I'm one of the ones that get up and said, let's find and make cuts. I'm hearing about assistant county administrator who's supposed to be, I think, running the public works department. What else does that person do? I mean, I haven't heard what that person's salaries cost. We're hiring 13 people. Most businesses are doing everything they can to try to cut the cost. And this is a business. Well, you won't believe it or not. This is a business. And when it comes down to the fire departments and rescue squads, thank y'all. Thank y'all for standing up. Because as Mr. Byerly did say, him and I may not agree on a whole lot of things, but one thing he did say, they do one heck of a job. And we're very lucky, as Mr. Williams said, that the trend is going in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone on Zoom?
No, sir.
Not seeing anyone there. We'll close the public comment period. County attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
County administrator comments?
No comments.
Board comments? I have some comments. It hasn't been talked about, but till the, the last speaker spoke about the school situation and what transpired last week. And clearly, I speak only for myself in this, but I did have the fortune of talking to the school superintendent, the chairman of the school board, and to the sheriff today. And whether there's a problem or not, I, I'm not getting into that. I, I, I've watched social media go into a place that, you know, it, you, everybody probably knows about it. So I, I only want to talk about what I heard today specifically. And the email went out, the letter went out to students, fam, parents and so forth. And everybody's got a copy of that. It's involved, I guess, to some degree with this public school system, more county government, schools, staff. The thing that I want to talk about with regards to this is I think our schools and our sheriff's department have really improved in a pretty substantial way, the relationship that goes on there. And I think that's something that needs to be recognized. I don't know what happened in that school. I don't have a video of it. I haven't seen a video of it. I don't have pictures of it. And I was not there, nor do I have any student or children that was there that had shown me anything. So I don't know anything about it. But when I talk to the sheriff and I hear there's still an open investigation, that tells me they're still investigating. And that's from the sheriff's office, the law side of things. The school side of it, it seems like they've made their decision on what they want to do and put forth the consequences of it. I just want to recognize the fact that the schools and the sheriff's department are cooperating. And I think that that's a big plus compared to what's happened in the past. And I think that if we give them an opportunity to go through the process and see what happens, hopefully what people want to happen will happen. We don't want our schools vandalized, our taxpayers pay for that. We want everything to be, to be right. And should there be consequences? Yeah, there should be. What they are, I don't know. I don't know who broke the law. I don't know who was there doing whatever. That's not me. I, I, I'm not into that. That's the law. And they're working diligently and they are cooperating and consulting with the school systems. And they are reaching out and talking to these people that they have, have communicated with that was in attendance that night. I will voice an opinion on the restitution, because that's a word that's used in the letter. The restitution for the property may be less than $2,500. But the one thing that I didn't get out of that is how much did we pay? How much did you, the taxpayers, pay for sheriff's deputies, for investigators, for school staff, for everybody that was there that night for hours until 2:30 AM is what I hear endlessly? How much taxpayer money got to paying for that? Not just the vandalism or whatever it is that occurred at the school, but we have staff time. And like our fire department, our sheriff's department was called and they come, they go right there. They go after them. They're looking to do the job to protect the citizens of this county and the property. And that's the, that's, that's the point that I want to make. So I appreciate everybody's time. We're adjourned.